Okay, welcome everyone. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2015, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2015, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits to my left and to my right. Speak into the microphones and assistive listening devices are available. Okay, Jason, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call? Mayor Beryl Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Walcott?
Here.
Borough Attorney Shamir?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held on October 7th, 2014, November 12th, 2014, the adjourned and organization meetings held January 6th, and the regular and conference meetings held January 20th, 2015, as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Are they approved by roll call?
Do roll calls, some people might want to abstain.
Okay. You should abstain. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine?
I abstain.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walcott?
Yes.
Okay, I am delighted to recognize Miriam Rosenbluth of Highland Park Borough as a state semifinalist for her interest in civic contributions to the community as evidenced by her participation in the Louis Bay II Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition. We will be presenting this certificate to Ms. Rosenbluth in person. Any Main Street minute you would like to give on behalf of Main Street, Councilwoman?
No, Mayor, at this point, the board meeting is actually scheduled for tomorrow night, so I would have had a report, but one day short, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
I will be at that meeting.
All right, let's do our council report, and we'll start with you, Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to report on a very, very, very long awaited, as long as I've been on council, and that feels like forever, I feel like I'm the great-grandmother on council, but we have finally found, I want to give a little bit of history before I start talking about this. When I came on council, one of the things that we wanted us to do was to improve the relationship with our entire community, and a major portion of that community was with our youth. And as a mother of an African-American son, I wanted to see that relationship with our police department and young black males to be improved, for everyone, but in particular, for young African-American youth, for them to develop a relationship with our police department, understand how the approaches are, and for the police department to develop a relationship with them and with him. And I remember an incident that happened with my son. We have a camp, Son in the Fun Camp, that we had here in Highland Park, and my son begged and pleaded from me to allow him to ride his bike to camp. And I kept on saying, "No, you can't ride your bike," and then eventually, after begging and pleading, his famous dinosaur bike, with the dinosaur helmet and the fringes and everything else, I allowed him to ride his bike to camp. Two days after he started riding his bike, somebody stole his bike. He was very upset, he did not want to tell me his bike was stolen, and so he decided to leave camp, and you saw a police officer in the park, and he stopped him, and he filed his own police report because he refused to tell me that his bike was missing, and he was nine years old at the time. And that just goes to show about the relationship that Highland Park has worked very hard to cultivate with our young people, that my son felt encouraged enough to approach an officer, to tell him that his bike was missing, and that he wanted us to file a report to get his bike back. Unbeknownst to me, the next day, I got a call from the chief at the time, and he says, "We found your son's bike," and I said, "You found my son's bike?" And he says, "Yes. Your son stopped an officer yesterday and filed a police report that his bike was missing, and we found it." So I think talking about doing things right, and having the right persons in place, and to create a community relationship, that was really one of the things that we wanted to do. And through the years, as we hired police officers, one of the things, the major questions that we would ask is, "How well, how is your community policing relation skills? And how do you feel about that? How would you approach that?" And we would ask various types of questions to get that particular question answered. And I felt that we have done a pretty good job in all the young people that we have hired onto our police department, and that they all have a willingness to serve our community and to serve our youth and to create youth program. And with that, I am happy to announce that we have, we have a position of juvenile, the juvenile officer within our borough of Highland Park, very, very long awaited, and he's here to serve all residents of Highland Park. It has been going extremely well. He is a liaison to all the youth, and he has been developing some wonderful relationship with all the young people in town. Quite sure, as he grows into the position and learns more about our youth in Highland Park, the relationship is only going to get better. We have been hearing wonderful news about the relationship with Officer Corbello and the young people, and we're looking to do a lot more. This coming September, we're going to be looking at creating more programs and more after-school activities for teens, and I'm confident that he will fit well within this realm, working directly with the young people. I'm quite sure our mayor will have a few more things to say about this position, but I am really excited because this is something that I have envisioned for a very long time. And there are other persons in Highland Park that I know that is very excited about having someone that will liaison with our young people to explain the do's and the don't, the rules, and I don't have to tell any of you in this room or listening audience about the tensions that we have seen in our country. And if we can have more dialogues such as this, and more community policing, not so much policing, but more community dialogue with our police officers, I think that we're in a better shape, and we probably could be a model for some of the towns who have been having issues, because we're going to keep the dialogue open with our young people to navigate them through any questions that they may have, have a presence, but not a present as a medicine present, but to develop a community relationship with young people. And so I'm really excited about that. Moving on, we have a, the Click It or Ticket program is in effect, and just a reminder, we have the billboards in town, but just a reminder, you must put your seatbelt on because you will be getting a ticket if you don't. Also, this Memorial Day, our grand marshal for a Memorial Day parade will be Officer Sean Bibby, and he is a naval, Navy veteran, and we're happy to have him, he's been with us over, a little bit over a year, and he will be the grand marshal, and veterans, and we're only happier to have him here in Highland Park. Please come out, the parade starts at eight o'clock, and it starts with the Police and Fire Department, so come out and show your support, and show your support for all of us, but show your support in particular for all the veterans and Veterans Day. The regular parade route will come into Highland Park about 11:00 from New Brunswick, but we're asking for you to come out in the morning as well, and definitely come out to the parade route. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Fine?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to mention that the next mayor's wellness campaign meeting will be taking place here at Borough Hall next Wednesday, May 27th, at 7:00 PM. There will not be a meeting of the Highland Park Library Board of Trustees in May, the next one will be at the end of June, and I'm glad to report that the Friends of the Highland Park Library Book Sale that took place this past weekend raised a record-breaking amount of money. The final tally isn't in, but I'm told it's close to $7,800, over, more than $1,000 than was raised last year, and just wanted to thank all the volunteers who helped sort the books in preparation for the sale, and specifically to thank four individuals who organized the sale, Lois Farah, Mort Farah, Michael Juilliard, and George Peterson. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to touch on what Councilwoman Elsie Foster-Dublin, sorry about that, Elsie.[693.32][693.32](Laughter). Spit it out. About the Memorial Day Parade, and that is this coming Monday, May 25th. The actual parade begins in New Brunswick at Monument Square, which is the corner of Livingston and George Street over in New Brunswick, and then proceeds on Raritan Avenue, Route 27, to the Doughboy, where there are some concluding services there. So please come out and honor our veterans by lining the streets this coming Monday for Memorial Day. The senior citizens prom has actually been moved, originally it was scheduled for Thursday, June 18th, and it is now going to be held on Wednesday, June 17th, and it's going to be held at the senior center, but I did want to mention that the prom for the senior citizens has been moved from June 18th to the 17th, which is a Wednesday. There are still two vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Committee, so if there's anyone interested in joining that group, there's two vacancies, so I just wanted to remind everyone about that. Coming up in July, on July 2nd, we'll be having our fireworks here in Highland Park. Festivities begin around 5:00, and of course, the fireworks will be actually set off later than that, when it gets closer to dark. The rain date for the fireworks is actually Sunday, July 5th. And also, just a reminder, summer camp registrations are out and available, the actual camps this year start on July 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman George?
Just briefly, if I may, Mayor, the redevelopment agency is completing its review, as you know, the reconciliation of the zoning code with the redevelopment plan to avoid any traps or pitfalls. I'm meeting with a group in town on June 7th at a trustees' meeting with regard to potential to use a parking lot for municipal purposes. The planning board did not meet on Thursday because of a lack of agenda, but the zoning board on Monday adopted the final resolution for Highland Cliffs, which includes an important piece, which is the ability of the borough to go forward and hopefully resolve issues with the DOT about the wall, which I understand is going very, very well at this time. I'm pleased to report that the zoning reconstruction task force completed its work, submitted its report to the mayor and council. Hopefully, we can get that on an upcoming agenda. Was discussed again at the overall parameters, I was asked to discuss briefly with the zoning board and how it would hopefully eliminate all the need for micro-management of sites in the future as we move forward and people come to Highland Park, but try to improve our housing stock. So that's my report for right now.
And I'd like to thank you, Councilman George, for staying on top of the redevelopment agencies and the zoning boards' regulations so that we bring them in sync. That's a project that's been a long time due, and I want to thank you for staying with that.
Thank you, Mayor, and in fact, because there was crossover in that group, we actually made some significant progress in areas that were maybe a little off-topic, but everyone on those boards has been in the business of volunteering their time for zoning and planning for over 10 years, and we've incorporated those recommendations.
Thank you very much. Council President Walcott?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier today, we had a water main break on Raritan Avenue at Ninth, and I just want to give a status report. Early this evening, the water main itself has already been repaired. DPW was hard at work all day repairing it, and I'd really like to thank them for their dedication, their hard work. And at present, though, there is still some traffic concerns. Route 27 southbound is now open, Route 27 northbound is being diverted onto Woodbridge Avenue at South Sixth. And I believe, as I'm speaking right now, the pavers are out to repave the surface. That will be, that should be complete this evening, and then later this week, we'll have the pavers come out again and do the final covering, so that should be, that should be done by the end of this week. And thank you, Chief, and the police that came out and helped with that as well. On for some better news. The mayor and I were at a breakfast last week as part of Keep Middle Sex Moving, their annual, their annual meeting and breakfast. In 2013, Highland Park initiated our Complete Streets Group, and our planning board has been active in that as well, and we just received a bronze-level recognition from Keep Middle Sex Moving for New Jersey Safe Routes to School, and also signed by Jamie Foxx, Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Transportation. That's a wonderful honor, and also our schools, Irving, Bartle, and the middle school also received high honors, so we're very proud of this one. And again, we continue in our dedication to promote bicycle and pedestrian safety and make the roads safer for all vehicles as well. An update on the new garbage collection with our automated garbage truck. The containers that I spoke about at the last meeting, the new toters that are 95 gallons, will be handed out in certain areas of the Triangle area on a test basis, and that will be beginning on July 13th. Please do not use your new containers before that, and we will be handing out a list of rules and guidelines to each participant of the program during this trial period. A couple of other things. On June 3rd, the special ed, a few special ed teachers are organizing a special class with our local beekeeper, Udi Shore, to take the kids that are aged 11 to 16 down to the Environmental Center and do a demonstration on beekeeping, and the kids are very excited about that. And I want to thank Alan Williams also for being there and opening the Environmental Center for their class that day, and special thanks to a special ed teacher, Margaret Classlow, and Julie Akial, the paraprofessional. And lastly, on Saturday, May 23rd, at our Environmental Center, we're hosting a really great program on how to adopt a stream, and this is sponsored by our friends at the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, and they're going to teach people how to visually assess and monitor a stream over the summer. We're looking for serious volunteers, adults or children in high school, we'd very much like your participation, please join us Saturday, May 23rd, from 9:00 to 1:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
Borough Attorney?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, I have a report. As Councilwoman Foster Dublin mentioned earlier, we are very excited about the new position of juvenile officer here in Highland Park. I know the councilwoman has been asking for this sort of position for years now, and when I first became mayor, we had an open community meeting, which Ashton Burrell organized, and at that meeting, we listened to some of the students and their parents. The parents were eager for us to have more of a police presence in their children's lives. In particular, I remember a woman sitting behind me who said that her son is very comfortable in talking with the police in Highland Park, however, he is graduating Highland Park High School and going to a college in Virginia, and she is very afraid and worried about him driving in the state of Virginia or the South, she said, and would have loved for him to have an education on how to talk to police officers, what to do if you're pulled over on the road, you know, keep your hands on the wheel, don't reach for your cellphone, all of these things. And now we have an officer that is going to be dedicated to all of our youth here in Highland Park. I wanted to read to you briefly a description of Officer Corbello's position here, just so there's a clear understanding of what his role is in our community. The position of juvenile officer within the Highland Park Police Department serves as a police liaison to all youth in Highland Park. The position was designed to address the numerous issues that face our children today. The officer, Patrolman Corbello, visits all of the borough schools under the direction of the borough superintendent and school administrators to keep in contact with the students. This allows for an open, honest, and direct conversation between the police and our youth. Patrolman Corbello serves as a positive role model for the youth of our community and provides a positive image as a police officer. He is tasked with investigating all juvenile-related incidents, including but not limited to crimes against children, crimes involving children, and missing children. He also coordinates and assists many youth-oriented programs, such as Every 15 Minutes, Drinking and Driving Awareness, Law Enforcement Against Drugs, which is LEED, it's the program that actually replaced DARE, Junior Police Academy, and the Juvenile Justice Committee. These past two weeks, Patrolman Corbello was in our schools, working on the Every 15 Minute program, which will be held on May 26th at 9:00 AM, by the way, and it's quite a program. I remember when my children went through it in high school, it really shook them up, and to this day, my son will not drive if he's had a glass of beer or wine to drink. He always finds someone to drive for him because of the impact of that program on him. And he met with each senior as a part of the drunk-driving program. The borough of Highland Park is in the process of formulating an after-school program, which Councilwoman Foster Dublin mentioned, in which Patrolman Corbello is an integral part. Patrolman Corbello can be reached at 732-572-3800, extension 4213, or at jcorbello@hpborough.com, and he encourages you to reach out to him. So we're very excited about that finally happening. I did want to talk a moment about the water mains in general. As you know, when I became mayor, one of the first things I did was put together a task force to address our infrastructure and capital improvements. The reason for this is I'm acutely aware of the impact all of the new development will be having on our population here in Highland Park, and you've heard me say this before, but we're anticipating a 12% increase in our population on only the already-approved developments. Saying that, it's imperative for us to plan for our growth. One of the components that is being addressed by this task force, which by the way is chaired by Dr. Clint Andrews, I was about to say Clint Eastwood.[1498.36][1498.36](Laughter). Write 'em high, hang 'em, whatever. But Dr. Clint Andrews, who is a well-respected planner at the Blaustein School and is responsible for green urban development there, and he, as Council President Walcott mentioned, and his task force have, are in the process of finalizing their presentation. Once it is finalized, I'm hoping to have an open public meeting so that we can all ask questions about it, and that's a long way for me to get to the subject of our water mains, most of which were built in the 1920s out of materials that are no longer used. One of the things that had an effect on the water main that broke today is the fact that it is located below Raritan Avenue, Route 27, and gets a lot of impact from trucks and cars. As many of you know, we have approximately 25,000 cars going back and forth through Highland Park on Raritan Avenue every single day, and that includes trucks, and that traffic is what finally impacted the water main below it. So that goes to the question of our water mains and our infrastructure in general, and what we are hoping to address. You may recall that a few years ago, we tackled the largest water main in Highland Park, which is Montgomery Avenue's water main, and repaired that, and it was a major project for us. I also want to mention something about the Rite Aid situation. I want to thank everyone who called me to talk about the windows being blocked at Rite Aid last week, on Friday. The chairperson of the planning board, Kim Hammond, her attorney, myself, Attorney Shamir, and Scott Luthman, met with the vice president for the district at Rite Aid, and a couple of district managers, one for construction and one for operations, to let them know that we were not happy with the windows being blocked and the fact that they did break their agreement with the municipality. The agreement was dated back to 2007. They will be addressing these issues, I'm expecting to hear from them shortly. They do know that they need to be compliant with their agreement in order to proceed, and if they are not compliant, they will have to go before the planning board for variances, and I don't know exactly how that would turn out. Okay. I am happy to say that Highland Park's employees, Borough Administrator, I'm surprised you didn't mention this, you know how important wellness is to me as a mayor for our residents, but also to our employees. And last week, we received notice that our employees won first prize for most participation in the, I believe it's the insurance companies?
The Joint Insurance Fund.
Yeah, which is a state fund.
Right, it's for our liability insurance plan.
They ran a contest among all the municipalities that participate with them to see, you know, how their employees would handle a wellness program, and we won first prize for the most participation. We were probably the smallest municipality there, so I'm really, really proud of our employees. I will let you know I participated. And please, kudos to Leanne, who is our human resources person, for coordinating this, and congratulations to all our employees who participated, and I'm ready for the next challenge.
Mayor, the significance to this is the wellness program initiative is also tied to the health benefits plan, and the insurance companies will lower your premium if you get your employees to participate in this. They believe a healthy employee is a safe employee, and therefore, the liability to the borough is lowered, and our rates will be cheaper. So it also will benefit the residents in Highland Park.
Well, that's great. That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
As Council President Welkowitz, did you mention the wall? Or was it... okay. So as Councilman George mentioned, we are making some steady progress on the wall. I call it the wall, it's our gateway into Highland Park. Council President Welkowitz and I went down to the DOT last week and met with the Commissioner there and made our case for what Main Street designed for our wall. And it was very well-received by the Commissioner. And we're in the process of making that happen, right? Okay, so that's exciting. And lastly, tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. at Te Te's, we are having a fundraiser to help send some of our deserving students to a Youth Roots Program Summer Camp. I want to talk about that for a second. I had the good fortune of meeting the two women who run Roots. It's based out of New Brunswick. It is a summer camp experience for children who don't usually get a chance to get away to a summer camp, who want to learn mentorship and leadership skills and tolerance skills. And the camp is in the woods in New Jersey, someplace. They go there to participate in programs to learn how different things affect themselves and the people around them. So things like the words that you use. What kind of impact do these words have on the people around you? It teaches them how to encourage younger friends to become leaders. When they are finished with the camp program, they are required to come back to their municipalities and their school communities to develop clubs and start mentoring younger children, who will then hopefully be able to go to the camp the following year and keep the process going. Just to give you an example of one of the programs that the students from Roseville came back to school with, they started a club about how words hurt. And they got a big group of high school students together and taught them how things like words that they might use in everyday conversation can have a negative impact on the people who they're using them with. And those are the kinds of programs that we hope to see come back to Highland Park. We do not have the money to send the kids to these camps, either at the school level or here at the municipality, because the program came to us after budgets were approved. And so, we are having a fundraiser from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Te Te's. There will be a DJ who I hear is pretty popular. His name is DJ Dabe, and he's from 92.3. I'm proud of myself for knowing that. And there will be music, there'll be food, there'll be conversation. It'll be a fun night. It is a fundraiser, so it is $75 to attend. And there is a link on our Facebook page for you to make donations, whether you can come or not. And I'm hoping to see lots of people there tomorrow night. And I am done. Any public discussion? Jason? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jason Rowe. I'm 74, Raritan Ave. I just wanted to briefly thank the council for their swift consideration of the Wage Theft Ordinance. This is an action that's good for workers, good for consumers, good for the vast majority of businesses that obey the law, and good for the local economy. These are all sentiments that I'm sure will be expressed more eloquently on the 9th, when the second reading is up. But I just wanted to briefly express my gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And Jason, there are other municipalities who have already adopted this sort of ordinance, right?
That's correct. To date, New Brunswick and Princeton have adopted the ordinance. And the ordinance is under consideration in Thorpe and Jersey City, as well as perhaps some others, of which I'm not aware.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public discussion? All right, seeing none. Clerk, would you report on advertising an amendment to the Human Relations Commission Ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you get up. Please say your name and address. Thank you, Herb.
My name is Herbert Gross, and I live over at Adelaide Garden Apartments. I would like to thank issue with the Madam of the council here on your report. I understand, when you were talking, you said your son's bicycle was missing. I can understand that. But in your report, you kept saying you want to improve relationship here in Highland Park. But I did not hear one word from you, madam, about improving relationship with the veterans, not only here in Highland Park, across the United States. In your report, you mentioned a couple of times that your son's bicycle was missing. But if you want to improve relationship in Highland Park, you have to start improving relationship with the veterans. In Korea, 70,000 of my brothers are still missing. In Vietnam, there are over 65,000 veterans still missing. These are my veteran brothers and sisters, who I fought for. But not once in your report have you mentioned anything about improving relationship with the veterans. And I am taking fault with every member of this council for not mentioning the veterans and giving the veterans the respect that they deserve. We fought for it, we won it, and we demand it, respect.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, if any councilperson has been working with the veterans positively, it is she, so I will let her address that if she would like.
I would very much like to address this, Mayor. Mr. Gross, since I have been on this council, I have worked tirelessly with all the veterans group. Every Veterans Day, every Memorial Day, I have worked with the group. One year, we had the honor of putting the Jewish War Veteran plaque at the Doughboy, a monument was placed there. We also, two years ago, named for the Vietnam Vet over by Wayne Street, where over by the Center School, that little park was dedicated Veterans Way for all the veterans that were from Highland Park that did not make it home. And I have been working for years with many veterans group and improving relationships with those group and making sure they are properly recognized. And if you heard my report tonight, you would have also heard that Officer Sean Bibby, who is going to be our Grand Marshal here on the 25th for our Memorial Day Parade. I have the utmost respect for everyone who served our country, who served and continues to serve our country. So not having respect or not noting veterans, I have always done that. I've always shown utmost respect, and I've always given credit where credit is due. And I've always worked tirelessly to highlight the work that the veterans have done to making our country a great place.
And Mr. Gross, we want to thank you for your service as well.
In conclusion, Madam Mayor, I would like to address my remarks, not only to the council member here, but to every council member. I would like to advocate that Highland Park, as of tonight, take it under consideration to open a Veterans Bureau in Highland Park to serve every single veteran who needs help. There are many veterans that need help. And if we have a Veterans Bureau here in Highland Park, I would be more than glad to serve with it. And I know some veterans that would serve with me.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross, also. Over on the method where we had the church over here on Banner Street, that's a home for veterans that was put together. And I've also worked tirelessly on that project. And the veterans were honored at our Veterans Day Parade.
I'm well aware of that.
And in conclusion to that, we have agencies that work. And we don't have a bureau here in Highland Park, but we work with the Veterans Alliance in Middlesex County and in New Brunswick. So we're tirelessly working, and we continue to work and to serve all veterans. And personally, I want to thank you for serving our country and thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
If I might, Mayor, just to add a little anecdotal history. And thank you for your comments, Mr. Gross. All my family is military, either retired or otherwise. If my recollection serves me, I believe that Councilwoman Foster Dublin, in the very beginning of her term, and Councilwoman Timmons, who was on council at the time, were actually negotiating with General Philibosian's office, he's the head of the reserves, to bring the Veterans Bureau here to meet at the Senior Center. They were very aggressive with it, but ultimately, the state would not open the branch because they were concentrating their services at our military bases at Fort Monmouth. So I would just say that over 13 years ago, Councilwoman Foster Dublin was working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman George. Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising amendment to Human Relations Commission Ordinance for consideration of passage on the final reading?
In ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 9, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Article 1, Human Relations Commission, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, affidavits of publication are in file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Motion?
He did.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk, would you report on introduction of the Capitol Ordinance for Valentine Street Road Project for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Capitol Ordinance providing for Valentine Street Road Improvements, Phase 1, in the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex State in New Jersey, appropriating $360,000, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Roll call, please. A motion to adopt and reject, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I just want to comment that the funds for this improvement to Valentine Street came from a grant issued by the DOT from their Transportation Trust Fund. And the legislature was able to find a way to fund it this year. We don't know what will happen next year. So please, if you have any time on your hands to write a letter to your legislators, please encourage them to find a way to keep the Transportation Trust Fund alive. Okay, Clerk, would you report on introduction of amendment to the Board of Health Ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 9, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Article 7, Border Health, has been introduced in writing by the Health and Human Services Committee for consideration of passage, first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Clerk, would you report on the introduction of the Wage Theft Ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
In ordinance to revise and supplement the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 2, 47, Licensing has been introduced by the council as a whole for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Proceeding to the consent agenda. I'm going to read through these and then ask for a motion. Resolution to amend Resolution Number 11519, Section 3, Community Service Department Fees. Resolution to ratify and execute Council 7 contract. Resolution authorizing stipulation of settlement, tax appeal, JK Estate Management LLC versus Borough of Highland Park. Resolution to approve payment to public safety building architect. Resolution to approve the bills list. Resolution to credit water sewer account, 1018 Raritan Avenue. Resolution to credit water sewer account, 211 North 2nd Avenue.
Nope.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the preceding items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I'm appointing the following: Anna Pere Vinas, Shelby Holloman, Mason Resnick, to the Public Information Committee. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I'm appointing the following to the Community Emergency Response Team: Rodolfo Giuliani, David Larson, Shari Larson, Bruce Nadler, Paul Scharf, Anne Cheryl White, Susan Winter, Nancy Wolf. I am appointing the following to the Environmental Commission: Karen Swain, Jonathan Abrahams. And that's it. Public discussion. Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn to conference meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.